Say the pledge allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Do we have Councilman Weaver online?
Not yet.
Okay, let's roll show, roll call show. For his present, Councilman Weaver is absent. Uh, we, oh, he's on. Okay, Councilman Weaver is on. We have a quorum. And ready to move forward. Ambulance, Chris, would you like to talk a little bit about ambulance or want me to?
If you want to start, Mayor.
Okay. We received a, a letter from, uh, we didn't put that in there, a letter from the county. A letter from the county was requesting that we contribute ten thousand, the town of Shoshone contribute ten thousand dollars for the, for the ambulance. And sort of our shirt, uh, to pitch in. To my, to my knowledge, their, their plan, what I read, did not include having an ambulance stationed in Shoshone. And I believe that is a goal that I think we're, we're looking at, that I think we think is needed. I haven't had a chance to respond or talk with the county commissioners, but I, but I intend to. Right now, Chris is still looking and moving forward to see what we need to, to get an ambulance here in Shoshone. If even if we have to do it on our, on our own, uh, moving forward, looking, look for volunteers. We'll see how this is, is, is panning, gonna pan out. I do know there's some grants we can look at to, to help us if we need to. But it looks like the service that they're offering would be about the same as the AMR was providing. But I need to spend some more time with county commissioners and get a little more, so I can answer more, but that's, 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 that's what I know. But we don't wanna, I don't think, we're not spending any money or doing anything now, but still researching our options to try to get an ambulance based here at Shoshone. I got, what do my ex-EMTs think?
I read the newspaper at the last meeting or whatnot, one of the commissioners was quoted as saying that the towns will have to pay their share or something to that effect, so it takes, it's no surprise to me, but I, I don't think they finally come up with a number that they were gonna ask each community to.
Thing with the numbers that they came up with is, uh, like the cost share percentage wise, we're paying higher percentage than Riverton, Lander, for a service we don't even have. That's just the facts.
Really. It's forward anyway, but I guess they're asking for some help. I mean, I understand that, I was just.
I know that.
Was wondering where the number came from, so.
I don't, I'm not sure how it was derived. If you look at our calls here in Shoshone, physically in Shoshone, it's mainly on the highway north. The area, yes, has calls, but not Shoshone versus Lander, Riverton.
That's kind of what I meant, it's kind of like we're on the hook for this area, not just for the town.
The mayor and I, you know, went to the special meeting at the commissioners, but they didn't take any public comments. We had a sidebar conversation about the county having extra ambulances, ambulances that they could, we have a bar here and have it here. That's kind of where it stopped. And, uh, Joe and I were just kind of talking about if the town's contributing money to something, shouldn't there be a little bit of a give and take? And that was part of what Joe and I talked about, just.
I prelude to this, we had two commissioners at least open to discuss. I would say the poss, I would say we had two commissioners. Hello, Bo, we got our speakers on, can you hear? So it said, Joe, I can't hear. I raised my voice.
Usually, usually people hear me pretty well. iPad's not turn the volume up, it's on the top. Sure. See if that works. You want audio? Okay. Bo actually had no audio, like, oh, okay. Meetings, we turn the audio off. He turned the audio off, so we're good now.
But I, I, I still think for the betterment of the town, we should try to pursue getting an ambulance stationed here, one way or the other.
I was just trying to process my head, it's if they were, if that figure came from their figure, if they're figuring that it would be ten thousand dollar deficit in their billing. Cause I mean, they're, they're forced off with their bill, and if they thought that would be how much they'd have to kiss off for.
I don't know how they, how they came, how they come up with their numbers. I, I, I was told, but I haven't confirmed that with Tony or Mayor Gard, that they asked a hundred thousand dollars from Riverton. But if you look proportionally to the population, their number should be more like, I did the math on one hundred and seventy, hundred and eighty thousand versus four ten or a hundred and sixty. You know what I'm saying? Go up population, you know, so I don't know how, or if they went percent of calls, and we don't get many in town. I don't know how, how they came up with the number. And, well, if we're, if we're not getting an ambulance here, I'm not too inclined to wanna pay.
Well, I'm not criticizing or anything, it's just like, like, have a credit card bill come in and I go like, whoa, what's that for? You know, I just wonder.
Oh, no, yeah, we, yeah, I'm.
That's all.
Mayor got it and came into my office with it and showed it to me, I was, I was like, so does this mean we're, do we have to give us the ambulances that we asked for? No, it was just, um, I, I, and I talked to Tony Tolstad, the city administrator in Riverton, and, uh, they've already passed their, they passed their budget by resolution and they're already done. And the letter came after they've already gone through and did their budget, so.
I imagine it's just a simple matter of asking.
I think that's, and that's, that's all, that's what they were just requesting it. But.
But I, I, we need to talk more to, and exactly get. I haven't sat down with the county commissioners and should see exactly, I just know what I've read and what in the letter they sent us, but.
Was there any discussion about forming a district, a four three meal district, like fire district for countywide?
Uh, I, the, the commissioners did mention that.
That's good to hear.
They, they did mention that, they, if I.
Because if I looked at it that way, that ten thousand dollars is roughly the same amount that we paid for the fire district. What is it, ninety, three hundred dollars?
Ninety-eight.
Ninety-eight, around that same number, so I'm thinking that's where they may be asking for the ten thousand, is if there's a three meal park. If they form a district, that would be quote, equivalent to what we pay for the fire district as well. That's just off the top of my head.
But if they did something like that, uh, well, city of Riverton, that's a good point, Bob, city of Riverton, that might come in at that number, maybe not that highly. Cause like our school district, the, the big, big, the big dog is the gas field, gas plant, that's where where we get, we get most of our funding. Not from Shoshone, not from Missouri Valley, not in both, but gas plant. But we could, what, where?
That's just where I thought was going to, so I still, but everybody else, I need more information.
Yeah. But it was my, my understanding, and I did, I bring, did bring it out the wham, on my LLC meeting, that, uh, that, my, my understanding that we, because when these mail levies and stuff were set up, ambulance wasn't important. It's not a necessary service, they didn't consider like schools, you know, uh, fire districts. Uh, ambulances were not on there, and that was my understanding of what not eligible for a district. I've had other people tell me that, but I think it should be, so that was my push, why am I, I said, we need to, and they, that's when they told me, they said, I brought up Sweetwater County, I knew they were having the same issue, they told me there's like ten counties in the state having issues. And, uh, and we, and they should be able to form an ambulance district, would make, make an awful lot of sense. In saying that, we could form our own district. For Shoshone, Lysite, Lost Cabin.
Same as cemetery district.
Same as the cemetery district and the senior center district. And. So, I have, I have history with five, you're firemen, so you know that, but I was told that this town of Shoshone was looking at doing that right when the county stepped in for the fire, to provide the fire hall. They were looking at forming a district. What I was told, I'm on the one department, that's what I was told.
As far as forming a district, I know it's not identified as an essential service, but I'm just sitting here. If we end up like the fire department did and the county forms a district first, then everybody in the county has to vote if we want to form one that includes something that they've already formed. Chris caught on to what I was saying.
Yeah. I think the county, I didn't realize that.
Yeah. I really always gotta cringe when you hear someone say that.
But, you know, I, I, you know, honestly, I don't know what the best route for Shoshone is, but that's something we should look at. Think. But I think anything that helps lead us to get an ambulance here, I think is. That's sort of what I wanted to bring, wanted to, wanted to bring up, and, uh, I'll be, I'll email if I can get some more, I get any more information, I'll be, I'll email everybody on the council, anything I find out. Anybody wants to sit down or go to the county commissioners meeting with me? You know, you guys could have more, have experience on ambulances, that you might welcome to. Appreciate your input.
I know three of the commissioners I can physically brief you to.
Mm-hmm, yeah. So, anyway, that's what we're looking at. Any, anybody else, anything, move on if not? Okay, uh, we had, we received two bids for, for the asphalt. We had seventy-one construction to, I, option one was, was remove and replace asphalt with three inch and include regrading. Uh, that was, that was what we requested in our bid. Their bid was sixty-three thousand seventy-one dollars. They're qualified bidder, do the work. The second bid, uh, for three inch, three inch asphalt, uh, strip asphalt Main Street, shape base, repave three inch, same, same bid was from Dave's asphalt, be forty-five thousand dollars.
I got different numbers in my bids than I'm showing.
I do as well.
I got forty-nine thousand.
That's, that's, that's a second, that's, 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 that's four minutes, four inch.
Yeah, but you said it was how much?
Sure.
Forty-five thousand.
Okay, those two numbers added together, okay, that's right, I was looking at the thirty-six and saying.
Yeah, if you, what, what, what we asked for was the three inch.
Right, okay.
So that's, so that's apples to apples, and that's, that's what we, because both, both bids gave other options. But what we, what we asked for was, was three inch. I, I believe that's all we, we need for, to go to a four inches, quite, quite, quite a bit more to do that. I know if you added, if you, you want to compare apples to apples versus the alternate for seventy-one extraction would be one twenty-four, two ten. And, uh, what you got, seventy-five, seven fifty, eighty-three, seven fifty, or thirty, eighty-three, seven fifty, for the other alternative, which those two make them fairly similar, but, but if you apples to apples, it was forty-five thousand for Dave's asphalt, sixty-three thousand seventy-one for seventy-one construction for the same. And that's what we asked for, three inch, and I believe three inch would be, be good for what we're doing there.
Apparently the base is okay.
Yeah. That was, that was what Dave was looking at, and we have where we dug, dug up and cross there, so, yeah, we had a cross where he could look at it. But he felt comfortable it was.
That's cheap.
Can I have a motion to accept a bid?
So move, or I'll move to accept.
For the, for the low bid from Dave's asphalt.
Forty-five.
Can I, can I get a second?
Second.
Been moved and second, Bob's in second. Any further discussion?
Is there any more planned work on the water lines in that street?
According to Buddy, no.
Okay, that.
That, that was one of my first questions about.
Okay, that's.
Cause we don't wanna ask.
Yeah, I know what you're saying, that's why I asked.
What about the sewer liners, that?
Sewers is in the alley.
It's in the alley.
And Buddy also moved the, uh, the valves back so they're in the sidewalk.
Okay. Next item, do we want to be able to lay, uh, fiber optic cable in that street, if we ever need it? Cause that's one thing that, when we're in meetings, they've talked about, anytime you do redo a street or whatever, you should have the concept of, you know, do you want to put in fiber optic cables someday in that street? That's all I'm asking, so we should look at that as well.
That's a good, that's a good question, uh, we. I gather, I guess it depends on who puts the, I'll tell you what RT communications bid was, was not, uh, was not putting it in the street, it was putting it overhead.
Okay.
Now, I'd prefer to put it in the street or the alley. I guess we've got the alley there, we'd, we'd have a, we'd have options, but I prefer to have it underground. But RT was putting it above ground, I know we talked to, uh, Wind River Internet, or we did before RT. They came and talked a little bit, and they were proposing putting everything underground. But they were concerned about the sandstone we had in Shoshone. You know, but they, that was their preference, that would've been mine too.
I just wanted to bring it up as a thought we could discuss and say, should we look at this before we go with this bid and say, hey, and talk about it, say, okay, we want, uh, fiber optic gannellis, or we want it overhead or in the street in front. It should be addressed, that's something should be aware of.
Yeah, I, I think RT, RT was gonna put it on, on the poles. That would, I'd prefer in the, in underground, but we do have an option to put it in, in the alley, so I don't, I don't think we're shooting ourselves in the foot by doing it.
Yeah, that answers my question.
A good, a good question.
I was thinking in terms of the alleys too, that's what they did with the big stuff that goes up to the school.
Yeah.
Cause it's, they found that digging was substantially easier than they thought, because there's, it's been excavated for, for gas. So all they had to do is miss the other two, and there wasn't a lot of sandstone.
Right, yeah. Good question, though.
I couldn't get him to put a line into my house.
Any, any more discussion? None being all in favor, say aye to accept the low proposal from Dave's asphalt for forty-five thousand dollars for, for repaving between Main Street, between First and Second Street. Say aye?
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Opposed?
Abstain.
No, Mike Dimick abstained from the vote, four voted aye, motion passed. Next on, you had the feasibility study. Now, this, we're not really, I guess we're selecting who we're gonna go with. The, this will be tied to, for an eighty-twenty grant for Warming Business Council. I was today met with Elena Zempel, who's our representative now for the Warming Business Council, we went over. So we're, we, in August, we will be putting a proposal together, the money's gonna get awarded in September. So, a, at that time, it's an eighty-twenty match, their bid is, and all the bidders know this, that we're, we're, we're gonna choose who we're gonna go with, but if we do not get the grant, the town is not committed to go, go forward to this project if we don't want to. Or we can, but I mean, that's up to us, up to the governing body, but right now, this is, we're just selecting a who we're gonna work with on this project, and we'll have to submit a grant application to Warming Business Council for this, and if it's approved, then we'll move forward. And if it's not approved, then we got a decision to make if we want to move forward or don't move forward, but it's just make sure everybody, we're all on the same page, page, and I'm sure everybody here understood that, but there may be people in the audience that didn't. So, just, just clarification in case somebody out there listening, that's sort of what we're doing. So this work would probably not start for, uh, maybe till October-ish. And would take probably at least three months to complete, three to four months, we got tallies in there, but some, something like that. We, we did have one of our, uh, a few budget proposals, one of the, one of the bidders consulted would like six to nine months, six to nine months, but he said he thought he could do it in three months, so that's three to four months, I think is probably reasonable. I guess what's the importance, to get it done in that time, if we get that approved, we can get that out for the next, the next, or we're looking at grants next summer, or next spring, looking at grants, we'd have time to, if we had, if we had someone interested in moving forward, uh, that we could look forward on, on grants, or whatever, that they move forward on, so. But.
What all does the feasibility study include?
Well, there's, it, uh, it, it, okay, what they're gonna look, what, what they'll look at, okay, A, they're, they're gonna come in into town, they're gonna look at numbers, traffic patterns, they're gonna look how many motel rooms are in Temopolis, how many motel rooms are in Riverton. How many motel rooms here in Riverton? Are they, the, the study may say, yeah, you're not gonna, this isn't gonna be. We don't know an outcome. They may say that we do not need a motel. Or they may say you need a motel, you, you know, it could be a fifty roomer, it could be a six roomer. They, they may stay, say that, well, what would work is, is like small little cabins. You know, kinda western look or they want simple like the hill, you know, you know, I don't know. What will work in Shoshone, Wyoming with the traffic pattern we got through here and, and is. Would, you know, would it be feasible for a motel and a cafe to operate in, in Shoshone?
Yeah, that's the two items that I was thinking. It's, it's moving to those two.
Yeah, so they sort of tie together. And then they'll also look at location. What were town hall is with that? This making a good place? Maybe, maybe not. I don't, you know what I mean? But it's. Uh, would, would, would say town hall make a good restaurant and have a motel. You know, I don't know, would some of the highway frontage west of town make a, make a good place with some? Property north of town, somebody else, you know, where, where, where should it be? And then what should it look like? And they're, they're gonna, they're gonna look at housing or labor. I mean, they'll look at the whole economic package. They'll, they'll, they're, they're not gonna say, yeah, you guys want a motel, build one looks like, you know, they're, the, what we'll get told. Is, is it feasible for a motel here? Maybe, maybe it's not. Maybe we're barking at the wrong tree and they'll say, you know. Riverton, Temopolis, Casper is handling everything we need, or they may say that, you know. What, what would work in Shoshone, Wyoming, you know, I, and that's get the experts doing that instead of. Us guessing, if you know what I'm saying.
Sure. Well, no, just to let you know where I'm coming from. And well, I retired early and I was looking at some other options as far as things to do. Of course cafes are not the highest rate you can.
Failure rates, yeah.
Horrible. And, you know, we both know that, oh, I just. I'm in four by four. It has this one.
Yes.
Yeah.
Okay. The old Wrangler.
Yeah. You know, that decision. And I go like, oh man, it's a tough sell, you know, and the senior center feeds people and whatnot. So part of me saying like. Why bother? It's been tried and it's gonna go down. It isn't gonna go anywhere. So part of me is saying that. But I also know that I don't catch any fish sitting at home on my sofa.
No.
Well, you see what I'm saying? You know, I might go, oh, it's a cold front. I don't think I'm gonna catch any fish today. But if I don't go try, so I'm really torn. I don't know for sure. That's why we talk it out.
Well, sure. Well, you know, the decision, like I said, could be nothing. The decision could be a brand name. You know, like a Days Inn or, or Comfort Inn or Holiday Inn or it could be just mom, pop. You know, that something like this, you know, what they think would work and of course, they have no crystal ball either, but they can be armed with a lot of, a lot of, a lot of information. The only thing I know, we have a lot of cars driving by. I don't know how to get them to stop.
Well, it seems like the little, just from what I was saying, the little cabin type thing like in Du Bois and, and then.
Yeah.
Good grief.
Uh, Wind River Canyon?
Cody Canyon.
Yeah.
And then.
Cody Jackson's got them.
Yeah. And then Matizzi.
Matizzi.
They have, well, they have a couple of them. They usually keep the ones with the little cabins.
You bet.
People want that because they don't have to listen to the, all the traffic around it.
See, I like that idea a lot, but I don't know if it's a good idea.
I don't either.
But I like it. I sure do, but I don't know.
Well, I know one of the comments, one of the groups that we met with flat out said Shoshone is not a destination. It's not a spot that people, so what we hear about is people are driving through. That's the, and how do you get them to stop? But they're on their way.
Sure.
Someplace else. And we look at the motel that we have here, it's not sold and it's been. I, I look at what it is, it's RV park. So when it comes back to the feasibility of stuffs.
But you.
I know.
Man, man, management.
I've been in to try and buy that hotel twice and both times I backed out of it. Just as a personal feasibility, went through the traffic reports. Saw the numbers of what they had done, both when it was much better than it is, has been in the last few years. The numbers just never panned out.
Yeah, I looked at it too.
And neither one of us bought it. Tells us something.
Price.
We were, this last go around was awfully cheap. We were down to nickels and dimes on it and.
Well, it was cheap, but look how much money you needed to spend on it to get it up to standard.
Understandable. So I look at a new structure and think millions. Down there, we were hundreds of thousands versus millions on the new.
But. This, this, I don't know, desirability, it just. But what will work here? There may be, there's enough, they have enough traffic. I, I would think there would be some here, but maybe it may not. I don't have a crystal ball.
Well, hopefully someone tries. Did you hear me?
Go ahead, Bo.
I said, hopefully someone at least tries it. We don't know if we don't try.
That's what I was gonna say.
Yeah, and this is not a big outlay of funding for the, for the, for the town of Shoshone. So take a look at it.
That's what I was getting at is.
And.
You know, I, I don't feel like it would ever come to fruition, but if you don't try, and then you take the hit, you didn't even look into it. But I don't know.
We do, we do have somebody now interested in investing in building a motel cafe in town. We do have somebody of means that is looking at it.
So they should be funding the study to find out if they want to do it or not.
I can see that coming.
That's, that's a, that's a, brainwash becomes collusion of why are we paying for an entrepreneur?
Well, we, the town of Shoshone, if depends what the study comes out, can use this as. We can use that as recruiting investors. I mean. Towns all over the country do it, all over the world. This is a small, small investment. To, to move this, to move this forward.
But if it wasn't something that was feasible, why would the business council, the state of Wyoming fund eighty percent of?
Right.
Well, yeah, I know what you're saying. Well, Casper actually has a person hired. They have quite a bunch of people on the payroll doing.
Sure. And, and another thing, if the visitors council for whatever reason doesn't like it, they won't.
The other part, this fits in with a long term, twenty year plan for the town. It's just another piece that you put in that portfolio, like the water study, the sewer study and say. This is something that we're looking down the road for the town. It may not be feasible today or five years from now. But we can say. Ten years from now, this study was done. These are the results. Should we go back and look at it again? I, I think it's part of that long-term town planning as well.
Yes. There again, we're not spending a lot of money with a chance of maybe having a big return. Nothing's guaranteed. Like I said, I, I. I had a crystal ball or if I thought I knew something, but I, I think we need to. And the business council, they, they definitely. Want, wanna, wanna, wanna see that. They're willing to put up eighty percent of the money. Up to twenty five thousand, they'll spend up to twenty five thousand dollars their share. And we pay whatever it is and we pay, if it's the bill's twenty five thousand, they pay twenty, we pay five.
Okay, that's where that comes from.
Yeah, it's an, it's an eighty twenty.
And that would be the max.
That'd be, and their max is, yeah, it's twenty, it's twenty five thousand.
Okay.
I feel like when the visitors council came here, they gave us a great feasibility indicator and that was more than ninety nine percent of all tourism does not exist in Shoshone, Wyoming. As far as lodging tax was concerned. So that being said, does a ten bedroom, ten room, twenty room, thirty room, what, what does an investor hope to capture out of that? Less than one percent that this area gains. That's where, so in my mind, I'm making my own feasibility, saying, what does it take? Does it could work? Is it not gonna work? But, but I still come back to there's somebody interested and wants to do it. I feel like. How do we tell the next person that comes to the town, says, I want you to help me with this? And we tell everybody, yes.
We, we have, we had a group that was all friends to before COVID hit. And their finances deterred them from doing it. They were very interested. You know. What their financial things happen, they may, they may come to the style of restaurant, you know, and, and motel that's here, you know, I just. I don't know. I like to see what the professional say, what, what'll work. There, there again, I, you know, cafe, motel, or town plaza. And we're, we're giving people reasons to maybe stop. Yeah. We do have a lake here. People might wanna stop and go fishing. We're having tourists stop down at the town plaza. We should, we had a lot, quite a few people stopping at our, at our tractor show. Just driving through, we had talked with a couple from, or not a couple, man, two men. They were from, from Tennessee. They flew in. And a Cody were coming on down. They decided just take a left to drive through town for the heck of it. They fell right into that and they were very happy. The guy said, well, I'm gonna bring my wife back next year. You know, they were just out there. They're on their way to Jackson. They were just making a loop around and went through Wind River Canyon, thought that was good. They just, just, just luckily just turned and went on down there. They were really, really impressed with the tractor show. They said, well, since the guy said he's gonna bring his wife back. But they were pretty, pretty, pretty impressed with, you know, things like that. We do have some good things in Shoshone.
Well, I, I can see a discussion that would go along the lines of. If confidence builders is successful in keeping that full, then most people. May very well want to eat at the cafe. And then if there is a cafe for people to eat, then they may very well be desirous of staying there to her.
They feed off each other.
Relationship there too.
You know, it's. And, and.
I guess that's what the study's for.
You know, and even more reason to stop. And fast lane stops a lot of people from, you know, just stopping. If you give more reason than that, they're gonna expand, there's gonna be more room. I mean, it's. Tim thinks motel would help his business.
Where's this money come from?
Pardon?
That are matched. Where's that come from?
The Wyoming Business Council?
Where's it come out of the budget?
Well, Chris. The, it could be part of the half cent tax.
Yes, it could.
Would be eligible to pay for it.
Yeah. Okay. I, I'm just curious because I don't.
Yeah, no, I mean, that's, that's where. Could be that or, or it could just be general funds, depending on what the council, how, we don't allocate the two, but. Part of that could be using some of the half cent tax for that project.
You wanna talk about the proposals a little bit or you want, you want to talk more?
I don't. I was here for one, I've sat in one of the meetings and talked to the guy for whatever we had, hour, two hours, hour was late.
Fellow is doing the master plan.
No, one of the consulting groups did the feasibility study. He was not gonna stay the night in Shoshone, by the way.
But, you know. Certain amount of people want a certain quality of motel and we, we don't have a higher quality motel now. Sad, sad, but true. The best room in my house wouldn't be three stars. Oh, we got, we have, we have three, uh, different entities, Smith bids. Plan one out of Cody, uh, a plan one architect. They also have a, one of their. Senior, senior members is economist. They, that's who, that's who we met with, Mike, you met with me with them. They, they put in a, a number of thirty one thousand two hundred and fifty dollars was their estimate for, for this. That would cause the town's twenty five percent to be sixty two hundred and fifty dollars. But the, it's a thirty one thousand two fifty. Think we had a. You know, pretty good, pretty good conversation. They'd include some architectural drawing, which we've been advised we should have some drawings. Instead of just having numbers. Have a conceptual drawing of what it would look like.
Somebody in Cody or just Cody themselves has been relatively successful in recruiting businesses from out of state. Maybe it's just because it's Cody. I don't know.
We're, we're a little closer to the big mountains like Du Bois, you know, but we, we do have our lake and we're not far to either Cody. Or Jackson, Du Bois. I mean, it's, it's not too, too far either way. We had a. Ben, Ben Levinger also, that's who's doing our, our city master plan, presented, presented a, a bid of thirty thousand. Even. He, I think we're aware of his quality of work and what they've done. He's very interested in this. There again, in three to four months probably to do the job, cost to the town would be six thousand dollars. He can bring in quite a bit of data he's got putting our master plan, everything else with that. But he's, that one, that's his, that's his number. The other one is from Community Builders, Inc. I've worked with Joe Coyne. You may have been in one of his economic development speeches at land. He's, he puts on quite a bit. He used to be what the director of Wyoming Economics. Very well known in, in Wyoming and have. I have worked with him, but I've known him for years and I've sat in a bunch of his seminars. Very highly, you know, very well recommended also. He, he's a twenty five thousand dollars. That cost us five thousand. He has the lowest price. He says he can get it done and he preferred to have six to nine months, but he, but he would need at least three months. That's the three to four month. Number, I think, what everybody's talked, pretty much talking about. There again, this would not start till October, so it would be done in the spring. Those, those were, those were our three bids. We requested at least one other, two others, and then we didn't. They didn't submit bids, ended up not submitting bids. So we have three.
Well, initially I thought we were talking five to look at a motel and five more to look at a restaurant, but now that I understand.
This is a combination.
And it's a combination and other things that come up. That it's a combination and other things that come up. Listen, I know a lot of history people will say, oh, you're just throwing the town's money, and when then other people are saying, well, if you don't even try, why do we vote for you?
I know.
Chris, what is the traffic differential between November and July? Because they're doing a traffic study in November or December, and one thing you get are the sleds out of Minnesota.
In Wisconsin.
Okay. Compared to the people from Georgia, Florida now, so. So I'm, I'm thinking how that study could be skewed.
Well.
Based upon when you do the study on traffic?
I, I think they're gonna rely on YDOT's numbers.
They'll just take YDOT's.
Okay. That helps a bunch.
Yeah, I, I know, two thousand nineteen, I got their numbers, I have them on twenty twenty, and I should have, but twenty, two thousand nineteen is one point four million cars west, one point two million cars east, about nine hundred and sixty thousand north annually. Ben passed on to me, he seemed to have heard the numbers north last year was one point four million towards the north. I didn't have the other numbers, and I haven't had a chance to have them called YDOT to get, to get those numbers, but I'm assuming those, they'll, they'll take YDOT's data, I'm assuming, to, 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 where do they get those numbers?
It's substantial amount of traffic. I don't know if they still are, but one time, Palm Springs State Park had the highest visitation in park in state, still do.
The, the majority, yeah, the majority of the people from the east going to Yellowstone Park drive through Shoshone, Wyoming.
It's just whether or not they make a right turn or keep going west.
Correct, and because of GPSs and stuff now, a lot of them don't go through Riverton. They go through Mole Valley.
Yep, they sure do.
It's a I followed going, going there the other day, and I was three cars turned in front of me, and they all had out of state plates, they were driving too slow, I passed them. They were all out of state tags.
Yeah, Riverton's not liking that too much itself either.
No, no, they're not. They're trying to get them to drive straight through to Riverton and stop. Doing a motion. That's what I'm gonna do, we have to add. Okay, I presented the information, can, can, can I, can I have a motion?
I move that we accept community building incorporated, incorporated for a bit of twenty five thousand for feasibility study.
Second.
Second.
I guess we can discuss that.
Do we have any, do we have any further discussion? None being all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Passed unanimously. Well, yeah, Community Builders, well, better was selected. And I'll be in contact with them, and, and we're gonna be working on submitting a, a grant application. And we'll see if we get it or not.
Does that need to be in the motion, as far as if we don't get the grant, then we're not gonna do the study?
I, I, we're not, as I explained, we're not committed to.
I mean, I just mean from the dialogue side, should we say this is the motion contingent on receiving the grant?
Make that motion, I'll second it.
I mean, if we're on the same page, we're not.
Yeah, yeah, no, that's what I, that's what I said from, that's from, from the day, day one.
And we will be working on a grant?
Yeah, that's, yeah.
I think I know who we is.
Yeah, well, I mean, we at town.
Oh, okay.
But, but.
Just clarify though, we're not, I'm not gonna have to come back and pay until we go through the grant process, and then come back for council for final approval, right?
Right.
Yeah.
We should change your name to Town.
Yeah. It'd be easier to pronounce, because everybody else can.
Town's gonna do it.
That's not very specific. Do you wanna clean up the motion? We already passed a motion.
Oh, I'm, I'm good. No, I'm, I'm, I'm good. I think we're clear.
Okay. Get real, real estate, I, I would like to work, I mentioned, I'd like to, to list town hall. For one, with, 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 with a realtor, I'd like to start working towards that. It may take a while to sell, and it, we're definitely not gonna be ready to, even if everything got right, it's next year sometime, even if everything ain't good, and I would like to list town hall, I'd like to list it instead of just put up big signs, which ain't a bad idea, for sale, you know, but I'd like to list it with a realtor that can get it out on, on a list. I think we could, we could come together on, on some numbers. We don't have to do this today, but I mean, I'd like to start the negotiation, start talking, and try to come up with a number, and then we'll bring, we can kick that around with the council, what we're gonna ask, and how we're gonna do it. I think we can use a, a realtor to advertise it, to get it out everywhere, and who knows what interest we might get. I'm assuming it'll still be under some bidding type, type award, you know, we gotta follow state statute, but I think we can follow state statute, get in, get a, get a realtor involved with trying to sell it and help us get more money.
So how are you gonna pick that realtor? What were the qualifications? I mean, just off the top of my head, how, which one do you pick? What from Casper has more spread, a local one? One that has multiple, you know, big name company that has multiple offices throughout the country?
I, well, you get, you get on the mult, you get on a, get on a multi list, but one, one of the things is, you know, what, how they're gonna, what, what they're gonna get out in multi list, usually everybody shares that, and fee schedule, someone ten percent versus five percent, or eight, you know, I think is important also.
So that's something we need to look at as a town and say.
Correct.
Okay.
So I'm just, I'm just saying, I wanna move forward.
What are the process of picking up realtor, you know, what criteria?
Right. Yes, correct. But I'd like the, if the council's not so inclined, there's no need for me to, to go down, I'm just, I'm, that's my thoughts, and I rather mention it last meeting that, that I think we ought to sell this, I just think if we get it out on the, out on the internet, and it, you know, I don't know who it might attract. Whoever can market it, they'll, market it like we, you know, our traffic count, things like that. Get out there and try to, try to, try to sell that, I think I gotta do a little research, but to be honest with you, I think we ought to do the, do the same thing with the other two parcels we're wanting to sell.
You know, my thoughts on it, but the other folks don't, at the last meeting when you mentioned thought that we should, you know, be advertising this property, I really wanted to say, well, then why don't we? But it was like a quarter to eleven or something.
Yeah, yeah, I know, it was getting late, but I'm, I'm, that's.
I think we need to sell it.
That's, that's my thoughts.
To ball start on, because if this could be sold, it could make a pretty good example.
Well, sure.
Moving over to the other place.
Well, yeah, hopefully, hopefully it does, and hopefully, because I don't know what building materials you're gonna do. But I, I would sure like to see this property doing something with this.
Are we going to control that decision, as far as if we put it up for a realtor, then essence whoever wants to buy should, so are they allowed to buy it, whether they want to keep it, whether they want to mothball it, so nothing can grow here, or do they have to present, this is what we want, and this is what we'll do?
Oh, I think we can, it's ours, we can, we can put terms. I, I, I don't think we sell it, Nelson's Economic Development, that's my thoughts. I don't think someone, I don't think we want to sell if someone wants to sit on it, that's, I'd come against that. We need, I'd rather see a bike, bicycle shop here than sit here and nothing, malt shop. I'd rather have a lemonade stand with two, two eight-year-old girls out here than sell to someone's gonna sit on it. That's, that's just me personally.
Well, sure, I, I'd be agreed to. The, the purpose of, so it's a dual purpose, it's trying to grow the town, and it's trying to, I mean, grow the town economically and grow the town with a nicer, I mean.
Correct.
So to sell, say we got this big fat chunk of change, and look at what we built, but in our shadows, we'd be.
No, agreed, no, agreed, that, the driving force was economic development to move there.
Is the intent to sell, is it from here to the library, is that what we'll go, or is just the, this?
I, I, I think, I think we, I think we have the vacant lots, I think we sell everything but the fire department that we own.
So the, so you'd have, so not, not the church, not the fire department, so they kind of an L, L shape?
Correct, that's, that's my.
As a package, or is a?
As a, I would advertise it as a package, it may, a realtor tells you, they say, well, maybe you ought to piece it out, to me, it's worth more all in one piece, but it's, maybe I'm wrong.
So when you do the advertisement, are you gonna have them not include a picture of the police department?
Yeah. But I think, I think we turn it over to professionals that, that, that handle that, and you know, and economic development, and, you know, I, I don't know, depends on what the economic development. We may, we even look at the price or what.
Right, that, that's the part that I wonder as far as what, does that have to be stipulated with a realtor or the bid requirements, if someone says, well, I wanna buy it and put a strip club there, because this is gonna make buco bucks, do we say, oh, I'm sorry, we discriminate, we don't want that, or we say, well, economic development, we're good traffic flow? You know?
Yeah, that's, I don't think they're legal in Shoshone.
I, I.
Yeah. I know what you're saying.
If they wanna turn it into a cannabis store.
Yeah, I know.
You know, at what point does, do we step aside and say, you know, how do, so I guess maybe this is a me question, how do I put my biases of say, oh, I don't, I don't like that?
Yeah, I under, I understand what you're saying.
And so someone doesn't come back and say, well, we met qualifications, they just don't like us because we, whatever.
I understand, and that's.
I, I. They serve for having a porn shop in the back.
Because they got one of those in Casper.
They do.
Porn shop, right off the highway.
Yeah, one time I jokingly said, I have these properties gonna sell, and I'm thinking I'll put a big sign, coming soon adult bookstore. I thought the neighbors would probably buy it, but I didn't do it.
Millennials won't stop, they don't, they don't know what books are.
And then if it's for economic development, so is commercial property that, of course, we'd have to have Marshall or somebody book into how that statute would play into that, but then you don't have to do the bid thing either.
No, I mean, if it involves economic development, it opens up a lot of, a lot of avenues.
Appraisal and whatnot.
Right.
It does change.
Yeah, it opens up a lot of.
Do things.
Yes, it does.
He's the, he's the one that said he worked day and night every month for.
Have you investigated that, 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 what were you saying? The adults?
The adult store?
Yeah.
Here?
Yeah. Oh, okay. You were just joking as I was, I was just seeing who had more, maybe had the information. Economic.
No, it's a dying industry, is what I heard, Playboy's gone under, and hustling, you know, magazines are a thing of the past.
No, but I think we're
But free wifi.
I'll, I'll, I'll get out and do some researching, and I'll be bringing, bringing what I, what I find.
And Matt Debo even mentioned some ideas that he had for it after the last meeting, one, I thought was a pretty good idea. It was a good enough idea, and I could tell you what it is.
Well, there's, I'd love to see someone local come up with an idea and do something here, that'd be great.
A gas station.
That'd be great. No, okay, that's, that's what I had on, on real estate, so I'm gonna.
So you need motion on that, or?
No, I'm just, that's just, I don't think, I just, if, if, if had strong, if you thought I shouldn't do it, I just wouldn't, I wouldn't pursue it anymore. And if I bring something that gets interesting, then I'll bring it to the council first act, but for now, I'll, I'll, I'll start researching that. Trailer permit, Kathy Dewett. They, she changed where she's putting the trailer.
Correct.
It's the same trailer, nothing's changed, nice trailer, just changed location where she's gonna put it for accessibility of utilities and stuff, I believe that's the reason.
That's why I was having a problem figuring out where the same is going.
Yeah.
Over here, yeah, one one seven?
Yep.
On the south side. Can, so can I have a motion to approve?
I move we approve Dewett's building permit.
Second.
Then move in second, we move, we approve building permit, or Kath, Catherine Dewett, any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion passed unanimously. Police vehicle transfer. They have, you talked to Du Bois today?
Yeah, I talked, or spoke with Amy, and so we were going to discuss helping them out with Frankenstein.
That just seems cruel.
Well, it, it solves us of a problem vehicle, and asks them, it's mutually beneficial, however, they're gonna kind of slow roll the process. It, this came up and out, went away, so we haven't figured it out.
They're wanting to, they have some members that wanna start a police department in Du Bois. They have some citizens, I talked to one of their citizens last week, and concerned about the, they have a lot of speeders coming through, the county sheriff's department does really, does very little. They were looking at getting a, a law enforcement up there to try to slow some of the tourists down, because they're zooming through town there quite regularly. But, and looking at their budget, I guess they decided to.
They wanna wait to get the cops grant. Be executed and constituted before they police department first, and so they're gonna get the cops grant, and then start just do it in reverse order.
We just take it and park it right over there, because I'll tell you what, tourist season coming on strong. This stop sign might as well not even be there, my gosh.
I don't think anybody stops.
Turn right, they'll turn left, right in front of you, and they're kinda, and then stare at you if you don't mash on your brakes. Oh, well, I digress.
I brought it up before about getting a dummy put inside that car and parking it, I still think we need to be looking at that, they're all over like that in Utah. It would at least put that car to work for a while, might slow up some cars.
Does anybody, I believe that's all we have on our agenda, we can't discuss anything that's not there. Can I have a motion to adjourn?
So moved. May I approach?
No, you, uh, we, we can't address anything that's not on our agenda on this special meeting. By state law.
Yeah.
So, can I have a motion to adjourn?
Yeah, so moved.
Can I have a second?
Second.
Weaver, second. Any further discussion, none being all in favor, say aye, to adjourn a meeting, aye.
Aye.
Eight oh six, with that on aye, to adjourn or aye to oppose?
To adjourn.
Motion passed unanimously at eight oh six.